And, I mean, the one where I was like, don't go because that was getting into rich question anyway.
Did you go to a radio school? Did you go to a radio school?
Yeah.
I'll make sure she's not mean to your screen.
My blood sugar was crashing. I had to chock it.
All together, we're being very light.
That's enough, right? Get, get, I'll sit there.
You didn't say something.
Because you're over here.
Well, you probably saw me as well.
Didn't you get anxious or want to?
No, no, no.
Yeah, I know. I do that, didn't I? It's like I mentioned when he said he's... Yeah, he did. I'll start going back.
Okay, welcome back. The Comfort Oversight Committee is now back in session and we are about to go to work session mode with respect to this committee that has public hearing on. It is a pleasure to be with you. Are we getting Chairman Senator Diamond? I'm just curious, should we go to hear a summary by best or are we just going to do our own discussion of what's at stake? Maybe you could help us just call our options.
Sure. All right. Well, there are a number of things were suggested to you today and to possible actions this committee might take. I guess the first and most relevant to the Goodwill Hinckley brief was the suggestion that this committee issue subpoenas or invite other people to come talk with them to get to the rest of the facts if there are any. So that would be one action potentially the committee could take would be to further question folks that were involved with the Goodwill Hinckley situation. Just aside, I found myself, I've been so close to it for so long that I was having trouble delineating what additional information I thought would be needed that would shed any light. So I think it would be helpful to maybe net up. So that's one possibility. The other thing that was suggested to you was to somehow determine, have someone else determine the AG's office or the special prosecutor whether there had been crimes actually committed with regard to the Goodwill Hinckley matter. So in the past, sometimes you have referred things to the Attorney General's office or we might at least talk about whether there needs to be a discussion with someone with legal expertise as to whether any of the laws that have been sort of thrown out there as applicable are applicable and also what additional information, if any, might be relevant to making that determination. Beyond that, it seems the, there was a suggestion to increase the scope of the work that you're doing here to determine whether there are other situations the governor's been involved in that would further push the case for additional action and accountability toward the governor. It seemed that the folks that spoke to you, however, already had pretty firm examples in minds of things that they felt already met that test. And the last action that was suggested to you was moving the matter forward to the House of Representatives for their consideration about the possible impeachment proceedings against the governor and that whole process that would evolve from that. In between there, some folks suggested to you that you might want to take the temperature of the rest of the legislative body that you serve with, maybe before determining some of those more significant steps. And I think that is the summary of what I heard as folks' desires and advice and possible suggestions for the subpoenas.
Thank you. Senator Diamond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In response to that, I think that we've done a good job in remembering that we're not here to make judgments on this thing. We're here to gather facts and we're here to get as much information as possible. And I think when Mr. Moore came in today, he demonstrated the value of that interaction. And the questions that were asked in this committee were excellent and they caused many of us to have the questions. I think, I do think it's important that Cynthia Montgomery and Eric Chadmore be here and I don't think they will be unless we issue subpoenas. And I think, again, as part of the information collecting process, there's nothing more important as far as I'm concerned is that I draw, my job to get all the information possible and share it with others. And as a result of that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we issue subpoenas to Cynthia Montgomery and Eric Chadmore.
There's been a motion by Senator Diamond seconded by Representative Mistrochio to issue subpoenas to Cynthia Montgomery and Eric Chadmore. Discussion. Representative Mistrochio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does that suppose the reason that only those two people right now is that we anticipate that Commissioner Disjarden will be here? The only reason he wasn't here today and just some written testimony is that he was ill and that we anticipate that he'll be here next week.
All I can say about that is I did speak with the acting commissioner 10 days or so well and he told me he wanted to be here. He was supposedly unable to be here. President LaCone?
Thank you, Chair. We had this discussion kind of months ago. I think we started and talked about a subpoena. But you said this is a bigger deal than just what we all see on TV. So is there anything we can make to know about new subpoenas from this committee? You saying it was pretty complicated.
Well, only in that there is another piece of statute that comes into play once this committee issues subpoenas. It's a very old statute called the Legislative Investigative Amendment statute. And so by virtue of issuing the subpoenas, which you have the authority to do under OPEGA's statute already, it dovetails then into that old statute. And there are procedures that are laid out in rights of the witnesses and whatnot that occur when we start that process. So it would just be a matter of us doing what we've done before, which was getting clear about what those procedures are and what the rules around that statute is. Ideally, someday, somebody will take that statute and meld it together with our statute and they'll have some very clear guidance. But we've done it a couple times before, so it's not like we don't know what we're doing. But it does require some thoughtfulness.
Just about then, whatever hand you say, it's more like an education for us as to how it works and what's going to come.
As I understand it, if we decided to, did wish to get these subpoenas, that's all we would need to vote on today. And with regard to that, if you wanted to address the subject of the investigative committee, we could do that at the end of the next meeting. You chose to.
Yeah, well, you would have to already be in that procedure when those folks come and issue subpoenas. So we would, I would work with the chairs to make sure, to make sure we were all clear about what that, what's procedures were.
Thank you. Other discussion with respect to the commission starting with Representative Sanderson and Representative Johnson?
Thank you. The issuance of subpoenas for the two individuals Senator Diamond stated, and I mean, I'm not being familiar with how the committee goes through the subpoena process, number one, before I vote to issue any subpoena to anybody, I want a clear delineation of what that process is. Secondly, I think there were a lot of questions brought up today where I'm not sure if I can support just that motion, the motion at all, or maybe that motion amended it, amended. I would like to perhaps maybe take a break for a caucus to discuss that off mic prior to agreeing to any vote.
We have never held a caucus in caucus before. People want to get together if they can. I think that's a really unfortunate phenomenon. This committee is made up.
I don't believe I've said they hold our caucus each other, but just maybe a discussion off mic with the chairs, both of them?
We can take five minutes. We can't, that's why, we can't do that.
Okay.
So we're going to conduct our business here. And I, I'm not going to call it the public caucus because this committee was set up specifically to support Republicans for a reason. And we become like other legislative committees, we have lost, I think, something.
So I don't know if I can answer the first part of Representative Sanderson's question about what the process is to be issued subpoenas. A subpoena letter is drafted from the committee chairs. It is sent to the individuals that have been asked to appear in the subpoena, telling them the date of time, et cetera. They may be asked them to come. We get a response back from them. So far, we've had no one refuse to come that has been subpoenaed. But there is the question of what would happen if they refused. There's a process laid out in the investigating committee statute that then I think allows this committee to take additional court action or something like that. We haven't had to put down that road. But if people come, committee chair will put them under oath if that's something that the committee decides that it wants to do. That would be another decision point, whether or not to question them under oath. They are under this investigating committee statute. They are allowed to have an attorney be present with them while they're being questioned. There are some decisions made about whether or not their, the degree to which it is a public proceeding in terms of being reported and sent out over the airwaves. We've always proceeded fully with the full public process that we have now in terms of it being on mic and it pressed being allowed in the room and whatever. But the witnesses under the investigating committee statute do have some rights to weigh in on that. But other than that, it's a question and answer session and the committee gathers the information that it has and we talk about, again, about what you want to do with the information that now. So sometimes OPEGA will create a summary of what's been gathered under testimony and other times it's pretty clear on its face and we don't need to go with that extra effort. She also raised a question for me, though. There is a cast depending on what this committee still feels it wants to pursue for information. There is a group of people beyond Ms. Montgomery and Mr. Chadmore that would be relevant to the couple of places that OPEGA has outlined in its brief that they're still unclear on. We haven't asked those people, other than the commissioner, to come voluntarily yet. And sometimes in the past, is what this committee has done, is say, we'd also like to ask X, Y, Z to be here voluntarily. If they say that they're not coming voluntarily, the committee takes it, you know, at this time you would take a vote to say, hey, if they're not going to come voluntarily, we also want to issue subpoenas to them so that you can get everybody here at the same time. So I just wanted to alert you to the fact that what you're after is to try to see if there's any way to toss out the places that were still a little gray, that there are some other individuals, I think.
Thank you. Representative Sanders has that? Answer your questions with these five glasses.
Yes.
Representative Clinton?
Thank you. It was valuable to have one or two senators and other members left the room. I understand we can't do that, but...
Representative, excuse me, I didn't say that. I said, we're not going to start the traditional parties in caucus.
No, no, no. But I'm thinking that, trying to think of the additional information. I think OPEGA's done a good job and very thorough. I wonder how much more information we get out of these two individuals. But having Mr. Moore here was, gave great clarity.
Thank you. Representative Mistrochio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I agree with Ashcroft about what, we've kind of narrowed it down. There are a bunch of other people, maybe, you know, a group that we might, Rich Abramson, like Sarah Landau Wood. I mean, there are people that might bring some clarity to exactly, you know, especially in light of the letter that was sent by Cynthia Montgomery in my view misinterpreting what the report actually said. So I guess I would be in favor of requesting other people to come and then giving that building to them to subpoena them because I don't want this to just continue of another month and then we, I mean, we need to know who's going to come next month and try to wrap up at least some portion of this investigation because it just is going to go on too long. So we kind of know who the players are and I'm sure that you have a list, that I have a little list. The only people that I want invited this time that I think would have been nicer would just come up and say, well, this one said this, what did you say? I mean, that was kind of helpful to even have Commissioner Disjarden's letter, I mean, his stuff, and then to say, wow, this is what he said and that happened. So I'm for, you know, submitting a subpoena, but if two of them refuse to come already, Commissioner Disjarden, he said he wanted to come, he'll come the next time. If he says he's not coming, or anybody else that we want, who isn't coming, that we'd be able to issue a subpoenas if they need to.
Representative Sanders?
Thank you, Senator. The public, certainly in their testimony today, really wanted to go, wanted us to go harder than our charge, but at a dead minimum, they want us to not be stonewalled. So I think momentum will probably build to at least compel the testimony that we need to be able to find the facts that we were charged to find. That is at least a minimum expectation I think the public gains. And I think we also demonstrated the insufficiency of putting questions in writing and having them answered because what we got from the acting commissioner was sort of fanciful after the fact justification that didn't actually relate to the timeline. So we really need the ability to have questions and answers in person so that we can flesh out whatever remains to hold. I think that's a process the public just asked us to do.
Senator Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I guess I'd like to add that I think what we have for a motion at the moment is appropriate. I think that we should be identifying other people we'd like to have appear, but consistent with our past practices, we should be not immediately issuing subpoenas. We should be inviting, I think, just for expediency, it would be wise to do as Secretary Ashkoff suggested, that if you do not agree to come willingly, that we, in our vote, offer the chairs to subpoena them so that they can have their presence at the table. But I think they are all due respect to being asked to appear on their own vote.
Yes, Senator Burns?
Thanks, Senator. I guess I come at this with a different perspective than what I'm hearing from proponents of those subpoenas. I'm not sure that anything new is going to be gleaned out of these folks. Firstly, I don't, I disagree that these folks don't have a legitimate reason for not coming there. Just because they are not named as litigants doesn't mean that they don't have information that could be extracted here, if you will, that may possibly be detrimental to whatever they're facing in the federal civil service. So I understand that. I really want to put my administration in that jeopardy, but as far as what information, new information is going to be gleaned out of those folks coming in, or maybe the other ones that we're talking about not subpoenaing, but inviting, I don't think you're going to learn anything new. I think you're going to learn some interesting things, but that's not what we're here for. There's a lot of anxiety, there's a lot of angst about this whole thing. I feel there's a lot of people that want to culminate what they feel has been several years of this management of your White House and the Attorney General's Office. That may or may not be true, I don't know. But I know that certainly was the tenor of what I've heard this morning. I understand that. And I guess I would admit that I have some of the same anxieties, even though I'm in the same party. I don't like the way some things have been done. But, you know, I was elected to govern. And those individual acts have to rise and fall on their own merits. I don't think we can, in good conscience, try to pull everything together and see whether or not there's enough weight to bring the camel back. I think they all have their own merits, their own issues. We are here right now to be agreed to state to a specific set of circumstances up until now and when, and that's what transpired with the Goodwill Hinckley situation. And frankly, that's why I asked the question this morning of Mr. Moore. As far as I'm concerned, had it been better judgment on both, maybe all three parties' sides, this all could have been avoided. You can't convince me, and this was a work session, Senator, you can't convince me that that board that was going through that process didn't realize the dangers, the pitfalls that they were getting into. If they read the papers, if they listen to the news, they pay attention to what's going on in legislature and the state government, they knew what was going on. That was the first pitfall that they entered into. What the administration did or didn't do is probably not what I would have done and probably not what most of the people around this hospital would have done. I don't know. I wasn't in that circumstance. But we seem to know what it is that took place. Was that illegal? I haven't seen any evidence yet to show it was illegal. Was it something I would have done? No, sir. Yes, I wouldn't have done it that way. Again, I'm not the governor. Had I been asked as a legislator or a group of legislators, what do you think about this particular situation here? And the funding setup that was previously set up for this school and where this school had come from and where it was going, I would have given a different opinion than other people than currently was given to that board that made the decision. I would have said this is a no-win situation because I know what the industry is. I have respect for both of these people and the way they do business on some, I guess I would say on most situations. These are two extremely prominent people in the state of Maine. And I think then they conduct themselves differently, they have different goals, but I've worked with both of them and seen that both of them accomplished some good things. And I've seen both of them do things that I would do. Everybody on that board knew some of this stuff and they went ahead and it happened anyway. Then that caused a set of reactions. They got the governor involved, the commissioner involved, the board involved again, now we're involved. It's a bad scene for the state of Maine, it's a bad scene for Goodwill Hinckley, but I haven't seen where anything has been done that requires, requires this legislature going forward. I wish I could make myself behave, I wish I could make other people behave the way I think the government should work, but I don't have the ability as far as others are concerned. I'm only able to do what I think is right. I frankly don't want to put a lot of things out and say the government, either in the state or the federal government. But I can't change those things. But there are venues that can. I don't think this is the proper venue to try to undo that series of mistakes that were made. And I'm not going to pursue or support pursuing something that I think is going to cause more grief or bad will for the state, more bad will for Goodwill Hinckley to produce no viable reasonable results. So because of that, Mr. Chair and both chair, I'm not going to support this.
Thank you, Senator. Chairman Quirrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And all due respect to my friend Senator Burns, I believe that we are on very solid ground per the Constitution and per statute. We had a representative or a couple of representatives here today asking us to do this, and I don't think the governor's answer of because I said so passes constitutional muster in the question of equal branches of government. And that's why I want to support this motion and I hope we all do too.
Representative, excuse me, Senator Disjarden, can you answer this question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support my friend Senator Burns. We've served under each other as a member of this panel. I've worked with the governor and I've fought with the governor like most people on this panel have one time or another. But I'm supporting this motion. I'm supporting for both of these. I haven't heard the questions that I have answered on open mic, I've looked here and from meeting here to make the judgment. I got to do it this morning. I asked questions that dealt with how, what went on before you made the decision, how did you make the decision? I want to understand more of that, how decisions were made, who was, if anybody was holding a hammer over anybody else's head or anything like that while they were making decisions. And I think that the right thing to do, because I was elected to govern, as senator or in my past life, a representative of the DUC, I'm up here to represent their people and to govern. And the only way I know how to come to conclusions is by asking questions and getting answers and making up my mind how people made up their minds to do things. What was the communications going on that might have or might not have made those decisions? Was there any conversations? And I was able to ask that today that brought people to those decisions. I'd like to know what they are. I want to know, was there any weight pushed on people to make decisions one way or the other? I can only ask those people those questions. I cannot ask my executive director, because she was the maker of those decisions, but those other people were that came in front of the stage. I got to ask those questions and I got good answers. And I listened to all the questions that were asked around the workshop, all got good answers. I really thank Mr. Moore for being here and doing it voluntarily. These other people have chosen, for whatever their reason, not to come in voluntarily and talk to us. I think it's now up to us if we want to ask them to get to the bottom of anything to really find out, is to ask them to come in in a more formal way. That's what the subpoena is. They had a choice of coming in on their own voluntarily, Mr. Moore. They chose not to. So this is the only recourse I have as a legislator to try and get them to come in and talk on an open mic so that the people can say their name and hear their answers also. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Representative DeShane?
Thank you, Senator. I guess I'm personally staying very focused on the fact finding portion of our mission. A decision was made about public money. A lot of people testified today said that constitutes misuse of public money and abuse of power. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. We'll come to that decision later on. I'm trying to get to the facts that would lead to that conclusion in the first place. And there are some gray areas that have been bandied about, but we haven't discussed that a heck of a lot lately. I have a governor who says, I did it, why wouldn't I? But I also have the acting commissioner who explained...
Administration in that jeopardy, but as far as what information, new information is going to be gleaned, those folks coming in, or maybe the other ones that were talking about not subpoenaing the writing. I don't think you're going to learn anything new. I think you're going to learn some interesting things, but that's not what we're here for. There's a lot of anxiety, there's a lot of angst about this whole thing. I feel there's a lot of people that want to culminate what they feel has been several years of this management of your White House and the governor's office. That may or may not be true, I don't know. But I know that certainly was the tenor of what I've heard this morning. I understand that, and I guess I would admit that I have some of the same anxieties, even though I'm in the same body. I don't like the way some things have been done. But you know, I wasn't elected to govern. And those individual acts have to rise and fall on their own merits. I don't think we can, in good conscience, try to pull everything together and see whether or not there's enough weight to bring the Campbell back. I think they all have their own merits, their own issues. We are here right now to be agreed to state through a specific set of circumstances up until now, and that's what transpired with the Goodwill Weekly situation. And frankly, that's why I asked the question this morning of Mr. Moore. As far as I'm concerned, had it been better judgment on both, maybe all three parties' sides, this all could have been avoided. You can't convince me, and this was a work session, Senator, you can't convince me that that board that was going through that process didn't realize the dangers, the pitfalls that they were getting into. If they read the papers, if they listen to the news, they pay attention to what's going on in the legislature and the state government, they knew what was going on. That was the first pitfall that they entered into. What the administration did or didn't do is probably not what I would have done, and probably not what most of the people around this house would have done. I don't know, I wasn't in that circumstance. But we seem to know what it is that took place. Was that illegal? I haven't seen any evidence yet to show it was illegal. Was it something I would have done? No, sir. Yes, I wouldn't have done it that way. Again, I'm not the governor. Had I been asked as a legislator, or a group of legislators, "What do you think about this particular situation here?" And the funding setup that was previously set up for this school, and where this school had come from and where it was going, I would have given a different opinion than other people, than the family was given for that board that made the decision. I would have said, "This is a no-win situation," because I know what the industry is. I have respect for both of these people and the way they do business on some, I guess I would say on most situations. These are two extremely prominent people in the state of Maine. And I think then they conduct themselves differently, they have different goals. But I've worked with both of them, I've seen that both of them accomplished some good things, and I've seen both of them do things that I would do. Everybody on that board knew some of this stuff, and they went ahead and covered it anyway. Then, that caused a set of reactions. They got the governor involved, the commissioner involved, the board involved again, now we're involved. It's a bad scene for the state of Maine, it's a bad scene for Goodwill Weekly, but I haven't seen where anything has been done that requires this legislature going forward. I wish I could make myself behave, I wish I could make other people behave the way I think the government should work, but I don't have the ability as far as others are concerned. I'm only able to do what I think is right. I frankly don't want to put a lot of things out and say the government, either in the state or the federal government. But I can't change those things. But there are venues that can. I don't think this is the proper venue to try to undo that series of mistakes that were made. And I'm not going to pursue or support pursuing something that I think is going to cause more grief, more bad will for the state, more bad will for Goodwill Weekly, and produce no viable reasonable results. So because of that, Mr. Chair and Ms. Cochrane, I'm not going to support this.
Thank you, Senator. Chairman Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. And all due respect to my friend Senator Burns, I believe that we are on very solid ground per the Constitution and per statute. We had a representative, or a couple of representatives here today, asking us to do this, and I don't think the governor's answer of "because I said so" passes constitutional muster in the question of equal branches of government. And that's why I want to support this motion, and I hope he will too.
Mr. Representative, excuse me, Senator Zoskew, give me this question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support my friend Senator Burns, who have served under me together, as I have with part of the members of this panel. I've worked with the governor, and I've fought with the governor like most people on this panel have at one time or another. But I'm supporting this motion, I'm supporting it for reasons. I haven't heard the questions, I have answered on an open mic, I've looked here and from meeting here to make the judgment. I got to do it this morning. I asked questions that dealt with how, what went on before you made the decision, how did you make the decision. I want to understand more of that, how decisions were made. Who was, if anybody was holding a hammer over anybody else's head or anything like that while they were making decisions. And I think that the right thing to do, because I was elected to govern, as senator or in my past life, or representative of the House, I'm up here to represent their people and to govern. And the only way I know how to come to conclusions is by asking questions and getting answers and making up my mind, how people made up their minds to do things. What was the communications going on that might have or might not have made those decisions? Was there any conversations, and I was able to ask that today, that brought people to those decisions? I'd like to know what they are. I want to know, was there any weight pushed on people to make decisions one way or the other? I can only ask those people those questions. I cannot ask my executive director, she wasn't making those decisions, but those other people were that came in front of the stage. I got to ask those questions, and I got good answers. And I listened to all the questions that were asked around the work, too, all got good answers. I really thank Mr. Moore for being here and doing it voluntarily. These other people have chosen, for whatever their reason, not to come in voluntarily and talk to us. I think it's now up to us, if we want to ask them to get to the bottom of anything, to really find out, is to ask them to come in in a more formal way, that's what the subpoena is. They had a choice of coming in on their own voluntarily, Mr. Moore. They chose not to, so this is the only recourse I have as a legislator to try and get them to come in and talk on an open mic, so that the people can say the name and hear their answers also. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Representative DeShane.
Thank you, Senator. I guess I'm personally staying very focused on the fact finding portion of our mission. A decision was made about public money, a lot of people justified today said that constitutes misuse of public money and abuse of power. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, we'll come to that decision later on. I'm trying to get to the facts that would lead to that conclusion in the first place. And there are some gray areas that have been bandied about, but we haven't discussed that I think a lot lately. I have a governor who says, "I did it, why wouldn't I?" But I also have the acting commissioner who explained that he was acting on the administration's concerns, much of it appeared to be somewhat in his own discretion. And it's not clear what the nexus was between what the governor was credited for doing versus what the acting commissioner did in his own. That's not really been completely fleshed out for, so there's a set of facts there that use a little bit of help. And the second is this cabinet meeting where people come out of there with fuzzy, different memories. That's a little disturbing, too. That, to me, could be fleshed out by getting some people in the room to answer some questions. So that's why, if they're not going to come willingly, you may have to step up as a legislature and carry out people's business.
Thank you. Senator Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree, we really need to get to the bottom of some of the still unresolved inconsistencies, get to the facts of the matter. And it's not, as we were reminded by several people speaking today, it's not our job to make a determination on impeachment. It's our job to get the facts of the matter and let the House decide what to do with that. I have questions about how the decision to pull back check payment was already a process. I have questions about how only one of the multiple entities with which there were checks written under that budget line was withheld, and the others were moved forward in spite of there being, those payments being in conflict with what was put forward as an explanation why Goodwill Weekly was withheld. And so I think that we need to have people before us that were involved in those matters in the meeting, a staff meeting that occurred before the DOE staff meeting, and people from the DOE staff meeting, and find out how that decision was made, what influenced it, and where that influential decision came from. I think that there are other questions as well that we should be getting to the bottom of. I would submit, for instance, that regardless of whether communication from the governor is handwritten or not, when the substance of that communication involves exercising the power that exists not in the person, but in the office, that it is an official communication. And I'd like to know exactly what has happened to the copies of that communication that should exist within the office of the governor. So I have multiple questions I'd like to have answered, too. And I think it is appropriate that we exercise our power that falls easily on this body to compel people to come before us and provide the answers to these important questions raised by the request. Our investigation unanimously will pursue into the request from several legislators regarding their constitutional powers of appeal. It's our job to get to the bottom of those facts. I understand that the senator disagrees with me on whether the people we're asking to come before us are somehow at risk if they expose that. They are, in fact, not named on the lawsuit. Whether that means that they are absolved from any possible jeopardy in the process, of course, not everyone could come before us and say things that are regarding unfortunate circumstances that expose some liability. That's never stopped us before, nor should it stop us in the future from asking the questions that need to be asked to get to the facts of the matter and what we're responsible for investigating. Furthermore, Montgomery provided two pages of testimony in effect as to her side of, her view of what had happened. I submit that if she was particularly concerned about her expressing any information regarding the Goodwill Weekly matter was going to jeopardize her in some way, that perhaps she shouldn't have provided her side of the testimony without offering an opportunity for us to ask questions to find out what the dozen answers were. And it seems to me very inconsistent that a legal counsel would consider that this is both a justification for the colding opportunity to be asked questions, but to provide testimony at the same time. That seems very unbalanced to me. I therefore would be, both feeling that it's proper and it's consistent, and it is our responsibility to ask that people that can answer the questions, as I mentioned at the beginning of my comment, to come before us. And I still believe that because they've chosen not to, that it's worthy of a subpoena this time. The other people that are cooperative or have not yet been asked and have an opportunity to come before us of their own accord, I think we owe them the respect of asking them nicely and only subpoenaing if they refuse to come.
Thanks, Senator. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I sit here thinking that I've gotten two or three notes from the governor, and I like, I have no idea where they are. I gotta go find them, so I guess I guess they're valuable. I found what Senator Burns said pretty compelling. And I won't even try to do, say it how he said it, because I don't believe on people and call people names and things, but in a sense, his comments about bad behavior, boorish behavior, not, you know, wouldn't do it that way, I think he and I are like-minded as I think about what I understand about this situation, Mr. Chair. Probably not the way I would have done it either if I was in that seat. And I think he makes a good point that he and I aren't in that seat, so that's something I'll consider. I find myself sitting here at times today and closing my eyes and envisioning other political figures on trial like this, and other people in my room condemning them, whether, you know, for their activities. And I guess that's what I struggle with. I, you know, I walk around in my communities, and people are always saying, "Wow, what Donald Trump just said, wow, what Governor LaPage just said." And I always say, you know, but what about, there's a whole lot of other people that say stuff as well. I go back to Senator Burns, and, you know, I think we know a lot about this story, maybe not everything, but I think we know a lot. And again, while it's boorish and bad and out in public, I've said worse things than that about it. I haven't found, I haven't seen anything critical, or not critical, but criminal yet. So I guess I have a question, though. So one of the two people we're talking about is the governor's lawyer, is a lawyer for the governor.
She is the chief counsel for the governor of the governor's office. The governor has hired an independent attorney to represent him in this suit. So she's not his attorney in that suit. She's the chief.
But here.
She's the chief legal counsel.
And so my question is, not knowing, because I need to be educated on subpoenas, there must be some, in her role defending, you know, being his attorney, are there limits, are there things? I mean, how much can our subpoena compel her to speak? If she chooses not, and I know it looks bad to come here and say, "No answer, no answer, no answer." But how much can we compel someone who's his lawyer to speak?
Let me guess. Mrs. Montgomery declined to come here for certain particular reasons, none of which had anything to do with the very legitimate question that we had offered, so that apparently is not in her mind. Certainly, to the extent that there may be lines of questioning that the argument we should not be going down should be decided immediately. She's intended to have counsel here to serve us. So it's difficult to begin with the next question.
And I don't know if it's a board or not, and I, trust me, I'm kind of like, I stopped defending. But I think it's important to say that this is not simply the case that the governor is not playing with this committee. I mean, I'm on other committees where he just doesn't send people in the summer. And he has, I know he has, I was in Lewiston, and we spoke, and he explained to the crowd, "Here's why I don't send my staff out this summer." And I just, that's important to say. It's not just particular to this committee, I don't think.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but what you've been discussing reminded me that in some situations before in the past, when we used this subpoena, it's not necessarily been that people didn't want to come willingly and answer questions. They requested the subpoena so that they knew that they had to answer the questions and thereby had a fair protection from retribution. And that occurred in the CDC case, there was a lawsuit going on. They just felt that they couldn't come voluntarily. They issued the subpoenas, they all showed up. We had the same discussions, how much can we really expect them to answer? Do we think we can get them to say anything? The end of the day is, they have the right to say, "I'm not going to answer, I don't know." But that didn't occur a lot in the Goodwill situation. But sometimes people want the protection of a subpoena, and that's been our experience.
Further discussion, Senator Diamond, and then Representative Spock here.
Now, thank you, Mr. Chair. When I made the motion to issue subpoenas to these two individuals, I looked at them so lightly. It's a very, very serious issue. This is a very unique committee. I've been on this committee now, this is my third time. And each time, as we face very delicate, very serious, very sensitive cases, whether it be CDC, or John Wright, or whoever it may be, this committee is always stalwart and sticking to wanting to get the information. And that's my motivation for this. And today, there's also a fairness issue. And today, we saw the public speak, and it was 100% on one side on each. And I think that it's, you know, fairness. There's probably another side that some people who couldn't be here may want to express. Clearly, our whole point as a committee, and always has been, is to find the answers. And we saw what happened today with Mr. Moore. His discussion with us, his interaction, caused much greater clarification as to what happened in his particular role. And I'm convinced that having both Mrs. Montgomery and Mr. Chairman Bier, Chairman Bier here, will also add to our goal and our responsibility for this legislature to get to the bottom of this entire affair.
Thank you, Senator. Representative Spock here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, for me, just listening to Senator Burns, and when he said that, basically, Goodwill Weekly should have known better than to hire Markey's, because they should have known what would happen, to me, he points out exactly why we need to explore this further, because what kind of culture is that when decisions of a nation like that is being made because of the fear that somebody's going to do something today should have known better, if they knew this? You know, I'm, there's a whole lot more to be discovered in my.
Thank you, Representative. Further discussion? Senator Burns.
Thank you, Senator. I was speaking again, because I mean, the bird's a lot. And we have a good reception, Senator Diamond. What I'm going to do today, sir, first of all, we saw a good representation here of one side of the issue. There is another side of the issue. In fact, we have a great testimony from Representative Timmons, who sent all of your packages, who says, basically, enough is enough. There are many others, I think, feel the same way. Obviously, there are, we've been through this for four years, we have a great record. The other thing, I guess, to try to boil this down, I'm not going to know any more after you subpoena these people than I know right now. We know what happened, the governor told us what happened. The committee mashed up quite well with what O'Keefe told us what happened. And if there's enough information for the legislature to take action based on what we know and what he's admitted, go ahead. If there isn't, then let's move on to something else. But we're not going to learn anything more, I'm not going to learn anything more, I don't believe, other than what I said a few minutes ago, some interesting stuff, but not pertinent to anything that would lead to the legislature taking action against this governor. This is all, to me, a lot of it is kind of period. This is exciting stuff, it's controversial stuff, people want to know more, but we're not going to know any more, at the end of the day, than what the governor has told us and what O'Keefe has told us. Because enough there, let's do what hasn't been done. If there isn't, let's move on to something else.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Johnson.
I'd like to address two points briefly. One is that what we're talking about here is not a question of manners. I don't think there'd be anyone in this room that would stand up and say, "I'm really pleased that the manners, you know, conducted this office." But malfeasance is another matter. And I think that it is, as we were reminded again today by people who came before us, talking about the nature of governance and governing through fear, that this is something that it is our responsibility, and we owe it to the legislature as the investigative body to get the bottom of the facts regarding this conduct. Second, I think that there is still something that we can expect to learn. There are several things we can expect to learn, to the further question. And in particular, it was unclear, there was conflicting testimony in a paper's report, and no statement regarding the experience from the governor about what happened with holding back a check for repayment. And I think that is another aspect of the control of what was done in order to threaten the Goodwill Weekly, and it behooves us to find out whether that was, in fact, another action initiated and, you know, through the office of the governor, you know, the governor himself, or not. And so I would submit that I think there are things to learn in this process, and that it is appropriate and it's our responsibility to get those answers.
Thank you, Senator. Representative Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've sat and I've kind of listened to everybody's speech and taken a few notes. And I think Senator Burns is right in one respect, that we know what the governor's actions were, he's admitted what his actions were. And going on and issuing subpoenas to members of his staff are not going to enlighten us further into what his actions were. We know what they were, the report has stated it and such. In gathering more information, again, Senator Burns is correct, it would be interesting, but is it going to really expand the basis of what we have already found out? Maybe a little fact? I have a lot of extra questions that I've had come to mind today. People I would have loved to have heard from today. But is bringing them in and questioning them going to further the cause and the charge of this committee? I would love to have heard from the VP of Finance on what he said to ethics, perhaps Phil Brown, Glenn Cummings, the board members, and Speaker Eads himself, about how did you learn at this position? What was the timing of the position? Mr. Brown, what was your interaction with the other board members? But really, is that going to further what we were actually sent here to do? And I don't think so. I think that's just doing our best to dig up dirt versus actually finding the truth. I think we've already found the truth. We know what happened. I don't want to be a member of this committee to be a dirt-digging committee. I don't want to do that. I think this is, this whole issue is accumulation of a very sad but unfortunate series of events. But again, like Representative Clone and Senator Burns, I don't see where a law has actually been broken. I won't be supporting the motion to subpoena the governor's staff. I don't think they, as individuals, will have any more information than we already have to further the charge. have to further the charge and move this committee forward.
I'm going to vote in favor of the motion for three reasons. First of all, I think it is important that we separate fact from fiction. Right now, that line is, at least in my mind, somewhat blurred. I agree with what Representative Sanders just said, that we don't know whether the testimony of Ms. Montgomery and Mr. Chapman were adding anything. But the reason we don't know is because they haven't come. They did not agree to the interview by Goodwill Hinckley staff. They did not accept an invitation to appear here today. These are two people who were right smack dab in the middle of this whole incident and communicating with people from Goodwill Hinckley and others. We don't know where they're going to say it because they won't tell us where they're going to say it. And the reasons for not appearing today, I find not to be acceptable as far as this committee is concerned. They're essentially saying that, look, there's a lawsuit going on, inappropriate for us to come and testify with a pending lawsuit. That's the same line of reasoning we heard in the CDC case with the document trail. This committee rejected that line of argument again, and we were right to do so because those people came. They came under subpoena. We had to operate here to question them. You did learn a lot from them. And guess what? The lawsuit went on, life went on, and the case ended itself. So the reason that's been here, in that case, we had named defendants who were subpoenaed earlier. In this case, these folks are not named defendants. So I think separating fact from fiction is what we are supposed to be doing in our arguments to mean favorable issuance of subpoenas. The second reason is because we have the public here to give evidence for a reason. And as we want to hear from the public, I don't think there's much question over hearing from the public. And that is that they are not satisfied with where things stand, the fact that certain individuals refuse to come and share with us the knowledge they have of these events. And I think to honor the clear message, and it could not have been more clear, the clear message from the public today, that dictates favorable issuance of subpoenas. And the third reason is a little bit outside the specific facts of this matter, but it has to do with our laws and legal structure. We didn't ask them either to be doing this. We are stuck with this responsibility. And we are basically being told by a separate branch of government that they are not going to cooperate regardless of what you've been working. And we can accept that and move on with life. But we can say, no, that's not acceptable. We are the legislature. We're doing important work here to be voted by 12 to nothing to do. And we're going to stand up for the integrity of this institution. And that's what I intend to do with my vote. I can tell you that it's painful to do, Senator Burns, as my seat, McDonald and this community in the Senate, we don't know what you do politically, but when it comes to matters of judgment, I have no more respect for anyone than I do for Senator Burns. This is one time I would vote in favor of the motion.
Further discussion? Hearing on? All in favor of the dependent motion? Eight, I believe. All those opposed? Three. Motion carries. Three. Okay. Senator Burns, anyway, it's another commitment case. Already late for it, Senator Johnson. So we are going to issue those subpoenas to those two individuals. There are other decisions we're going to have to make as we move along here, but query whether we need to make any more today.
Only if there are other individuals you wanted to invite possibly subpoena if they weren't going to be here. There are people who would be relevant to the matter, for example, that Senator Johnson delineated we weren't going to know more about, that we did have conflicting, inconsistent recollections of, that people that were in that room for those conversations, that Mr. Chapman weren't present before. I guess that would be the only other thing to consider. Give it the additional...
Thank you. Representative Campbell and Representative Cooper.
Thank you. I think they've requested, and it's not time for subpoenas. I think we have an interest in someone showing that has...
Yes, and I think that's what we talked about before typically. But in order to not hold up the process, sometimes what this committee does is say, we want to invite them. We ask them to respond by a particular day, whether or not they're willing to come. If not, the committee has pre-voted already to issue subpoenas. If that should be the case, if we really, so that you don't have to go another meeting and then have that discussion again.
Chairman Cooper.
Yes, I'm curious to clarify the acting commissioner of education. We have invited him. He has told the chair that he wants to come, but is it, I mean, I want him here. Really need to get him. So I'd like to clarify that, I guess, is where we are. Because if he denies our invitation, then we have to wait till our next speech to speak to him, and I'd love to see him. I know he wants to speak to us, but I'd like to get, I'd like to get that kind of confirmed.
I think he would be in the same boat as the ones I just described, reissuing the invitation to come after the next meeting. And how, as he refuses to, other than not being able to refuse to, if he voted to do so, we'll issue subpoenas.
Senator Diamond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, we heard today that Bill Brown was, he was on the board, he accused himself that he did appear as a guest, or at least as an observer at one point. I would like to see that, if you can, come as well. Is that a pleasure? Well, I don't think we're taking a vote on each person, but is that a pleasure for you to... So we are now...
No, I...
Chairman Cooper.
My understanding is that he was, he spoke in an interview with you and maybe another member of the staff, and that he has answered all your questions. Is there anything you would need to know, Beth, from Bill?
Again, I think it's important to, in context, decide what it is that you're trying to get for additional facts. We have inconsistent stories about things to do with the reason the check was withheld. We've said in our report, it's unclear whether the governor gave any directive to do that, inviting a certain set of people to help answer that question. I can't think of any questions that we still have around what Mr. Brown's involvement might have been, other than some of you, I think, have this pending question about whether he somehow influenced the process to the point that this speaker was hired when he shouldn't have. And I just can tell you from the documents that we looked at, that Goodwill Hinckley's selection process, that I just don't have any, I saw no evidence of that in any way, shape, or form. I saw a very well-documented, thorough, structured process that had involvement of a lot of people at many different levels of Goodwill Hinckley. So if that is something you feel you need to know to decide whether this is an abuse that stepped over the line, then certainly invite him. But it's not an area where I, we, I mean, agree, very understanding.
All right. We're going to take these people one at a time. So Mr. Brown's name is currently before us. Senator Diamond, issues the evidence.
I think that we'll probably go through them one at a time, depending on the motion we're looking at.
Mr. Jim, please.
The senator.
Can I just explain why?
Sure.
The reason is because he's part of the school's staff, and I think it's fair that we get a chance to ask, other committee members get a chance to ask questions, for the same reason we want to ask questions of our people. So it just seems like an obvious invitation.
Mr. Motion?
Your second.
Second. Further discussion with respect to that motion?
Thank you, Senator Ripley. To some extent, there are some people whose motives have been questioned as we investigate this, whether Mr. Brown has improperly influenced anything. It would be probably handy from his point of view to come and say, no, it didn't happen. So to some extent, some people may need a little help in clearing their own names as we go forward with this. So I certainly don't oppose having him come in and giving us good explanation. You mean if the review doesn't look like further...
Further discussion with respect to the motion? Senator Johnson.
I find that an interesting suggestion. I'll bawl that over. But I think that the question of the board arriving at a decision on who to hire is not what we're investigating. We're investigating the process by which funding to this school was altered and influenced, a decision which is, as we heard earlier today, the sole discretion of the board to So I, and certainly, although someone might want to come here and clear their name, I think it's not relevant to facts and to investigation we've been asked to pursue.
Further discussion? Does anybody have a vote against the current motion? The focus here is not whether the speaker of the legislature is not qualified to be president and whether his relative merits compared to other people who have been elected or who have been named. It's making interesting inquiry in itself, but not of our business, right, as far as I see it. So further discussion, Representative Campbell and Representative Sanders.
I think, with all due respect, I believe that it may have something to do with, in terms of the original job description, evolution. I'd just like to hear from him. Keep voting.
Representative Sanders.
Thank you. I respectfully disagree with you, Senator, on that. As I stated earlier, obviously, Galtner has been a stalwart supporter and champion of this school since we voted on that the 125th. And his obvious distress, his actions are a complete, are, what are other questions you ask? But his obvious distress over the hiring of someone who, via public record, was vigorously opposed to this school, it was the catalyst for this entire event. I think it's quite relevant to understand the series of events which led up to the hiring of Speaker Reeves. In that regard, I think it's very important to have Mr. Brown here, so he can maybe clarify for us the timeline of when Mr. Cummings told him about the job, called him to let Speaker Reeves know. I think it's, I think it's appropriate, I question just to invite somebody here.
Now I am going to change my vote, because I realize that my colleague, Senator Burns, who are in the meetings, who are voting, they have Mr. Brown come. I know that Senator Davis, because of family urgency, was very strongly behind Mr. Brown. I have to channel my confidence to my vote. Further discussion? All those in favor of Senator Johnson's motion? One, two, three, four, five, six, all those opposed? One, two, three. Did that work?
Not to comment. Could I clarify whether the motion was a, just to invite Mr. Brown to come, clearly that he's not willing to come to subpoenas?
The motion is simply to invite him? Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Senator. All right. Is there anyone else that we would like to either invite or invite with respect to the committee's inclined request? Representative Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would actually like to invite the gentleman who was the VP for Finance, who indicated in the ethics report that Hinckley's finances would continue to be stable with or without the state funding, yet we're hearing very clear indication from Mr. Moore today that that was not. And that obviously had a lot to do, I'm not sure if that had anything to do with the board hiring or final hiring or not, but I think, I think that with that in that report, I think we need to ask somebody about that.
Certainly, you can invite him. I just want to let you know that if you ever think, would think about subpoenaing him, I don't, he's no longer with Goodwill Hinckley. He was there on an interim basis. My understanding is he goes to Florida at some point, or the week or so. I just would want to be, know what you wanted to do if we invite him and he's not physically able to come from another location. I don't know for sure that he's there or not, but I can certainly...
Would it be appropriate to maybe have Beth and her staff, that cross my step, reach out to him if he is not in the area and indeed has gone to Florida? Perhaps some written document? Would that be appropriate about why he would have indicated to ethics where they create what Speaker Reeves posed their question to them?
Well, I think he already covered that ground. He did, O'Keefe covered that ground with him quite a bit, so I don't know if there's a question you have that I might already have his answer to.
I guess my absolute question is, why did you tell ethics that Hinckley would be stable without the state funding, yet clearly that was not, not the case?
The steps that Mr. Jurdak took when he got that inquiry, which, by the way, he fielded because the interim president was not available. He talked with the director of admissions at the needs school, and it seemed like the whole focus was on trying to determine what impact that funding would have on the student population within that span of time of the Bahia. He understood from the director of admissions that the percentage of students that were currently on campus, who were part of needs and whatnot, that there would not be a big impact on the number of students that would still be attending the school by virtue of the residential program not being forthcoming. Mr. Jurdak did not indicate in his comments to us that he had given any further thought beyond that to how that would perhaps impact the overall plan to advance enrollment to 210 students, which is the area where Harold Alphon Foundation and Chairman Moore, that you heard from today, that's where they had their real serious concerns, that it was going to stop the momentum of the school in being able to attract those students. So my observation from listening to vote points is that they were coming at it from a little bit different perspective. Mr. Jurdak's perspective was more, is this an immediate, is this going to be an immediate concern for the school? He felt he had ideas about how they would get by without the 530,000, but the impact on the Alphon brand and everything else was not part of what he was considering at that time.
All right. So is that...
I withdraw my request.
Thank you. Any other people that you would like to discuss? Representative Sparky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I just have a couple of people on here, Rick Aglason, Sarah Vanderwood, and Jay Nutting. Jay Nutting, Goodwill Board Member, lobbyist, and then Hinckley lobbyist, seemed to be, Sarah Vanderwood was kind of in the middle of a lot of stuff. And Rick Aglason specifically, because today, that's who Mr. Moore's, his first time, he was in support of. I would like to know where that chain was. So those are, I'm just saying, and obviously, I'm pushing this giant on this.
All right. So you suggested three people, invitations or invitations with subpoenas involved?
Here's my thoughts on that. I think we should invite them, but I also think that I'm concerned about that some people may still fear retribution or retaliation. So I guess if they can't feel that they can come, and they say they're not coming, then I guess we subpoena them, because I want them to come. And I'll do whatever I can to protect them, because I think that there's legitimate reasons that they're going to come.
So are we taking one at a time? There's a motion to fight, then subpoena, absolutely. Rick Aglason, take that one first. Is there a second? I'm hearing a second. Second by Senator Johnson. Any discussion with respect to that motion?
Second by Senator Johnson, any discussion with respect to that motion? Representative Sandersen?
I'd be happy to, happy to vote in favor of any invitations, but I'm not quite sure to vote for any, either.
Representative Strachey?
I'll withdraw the motion, let's just try and invite them.
Representative Strachey, that's a blank, Mr. Peters. Further discussion with respect to that? All those in favor? Opposed?
Peter Johnson.
And what is the next one?
Was Sarah Vanderwood.
Sandra Vanderwood, who's a lobbyist. Is there a second with respect to that? Second discussion with respect to that? Is that just an invitation as well? Discussion with respect to that motion? All those in favor of that motion? Chair? Sorry, excuse me, we do have a discussion. Senator Johnson?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask what question we're looking to have answered.
It was another of those, she was in the middle of some of those gray areas about where it came from and how it was transmitted, and I just have a feeling that if she's here, that you will get more clarity, because if you just have one person in that chain, you don't get it, and she was definitely in the gray. She felt, or she was telling a lot of people.
Thank you.
And further discussion with respect to motion, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Seventy-one. What's your person?
Was Jay Nutting, just as another lobbyist, and you know, I thought that as a member of the board under the committee, you'd have to step in.
Again, that's a communication only. So a second to that motion? Second discussion with respect to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Second opposed? Two, Senator Johnson? Okay.
Commissioner, you also mentioned Commissioner Dischard, Senator, before.
All right, Commissioner Dischard, is there a motion with respect to Acting Commissioner Dischard? Senator Johnson.
Senator, I move that we invite that invitation, Miss Dischard.
Invitation, only invitation only. Is there a second motion?
Second.
Second by Representative Strachey, discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Jay Nutting. Is there anybody else?
If you want to inquire about what went on in the meeting, we didn't list any of the titles and record of the folks that we interviewed in regard to that, so you wouldn't necessarily know who you were trying to provide, if you mentioned. Those individuals are Susan Bodman, who's the Director of the School of Finance for the Department of Education, Deborah Plaman, who's a program manager in the Department of Education, and Sarah Forrester, who is with the Attorney General's Office, who represents the Department of Education, and so, I think it's those.
The only caution I brought to the committee is we're, length of our next proceeding is going longer and longer than mine. So we'll take it one at a time. Susan Bodman?
Bodman.
Bodman. Is there any motion with respect to subpoenas?
I feel aligned, the committee with Miss Bodman is the person who was involved in the political lobbying that makes a difference.
Move by Representative Dischard to invite her only? So a second motion? Second by Senator Johnson, discussion on the motion? Senator Johnson?
Senator, Chair, I'm wondering whether any of these people we're hoping to invite would need the protection of help, and whether it might just be critical to answering that unanswered question in your report, if there were disagreements about exactly what happened, that we should be considering this subpoena instead of this. Would you be certain?
I don't know if it would be an appropriate move on the part of the committee to invite and direct me to inquiry the reason for not wanting to attend, but...
I think I could say that. So the motion, currently, is just to invite Miss Bodman? And there's been a motion except...
I'm going to be in the same position with Commissioner Dischard, because we so want to. So what were you suggesting just now? I was just talking about whether to bear it out, whether they thought they needed protection or not. That would get kind of... Well, I'll, I think that, I hate to keep it so further, and I am thinking about the next one, but you, this could be, this is the one, so maybe the addition of inviting like, you know, this is...
Your chairman, your motion now is to invite Miss Bodman here, and she declines to subpoena her, so a second motion? Second by Senator Johnson, further discussion? Senator Diamond?
Senator, I, I like to believe these people will come, and for example, the reason I didn't, I had an invitation to hold him to the Acting Education Commission at this job, because I'm assuming he would be all prepared. The reason he didn't come this time is because he had a legitimate reason, he was, had some serious injury. So I'd like to continue that assumption as we move along. This is why I did not second the motion. So, I mean, I'm comfortable, if, for example, the acting commissioner says no, then I would be asking the committee to make an motion to subpoena him. But I, I want to get into that, we don't have to. So I always have a invitation.
The motion on the floor, as I understand it, is to ask Ms. Bodman to come, and she declines to subpoena, is that the motion? It's a second. Further discussion with respect to that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please? Okay. One, two, two, all those opposed? Six in opposition. Okay. With respect to Sarah Forrester, who was a trainer in the Department of Education, is there a motion with respect to her?
Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Representative Sandersen?
Where is that motion filed? Do we have to make another motion for invitation only? May I still move that?
Sure. So there's a motion to invite Miss Bodman to come? We understand that she will not be subpoenaed, if she declines to. Move by Representative Sandersen, so a second? Second, Senator Diamond, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed? Okay, with respect to Ms. Forrester, is there a motion with respect to her? Seeing none? With respect to Ms. Ploman, is there a motion with respect to her? Seeing none? Is there anybody else that we, maybe we'd like to...
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to make sure you think this all through, so that we're not in this situation. The other unclear place in our information brief was whether the governor personally communicated to anyone at Goodwill Hinkley or the Harold Alphon Foundation specifically that funding would be cut. The two people who took calls directly from the governor were Rich Aglason and Rick Powell of the Harold Alphon Foundation. So I don't know if you want to discuss.
You have not added a motion with respect to subpoenas?
You had voted to invite him? Yeah, so you're, you're, you voted to invite him.
Motion, or motion, and anyone with respect to Mr. Powell, Senator Johnson?
I think that's a reasonable point, I guess I would move to invite Powell.
Is that without a subpoena at all?
Correct. Correct.
Agreed by Senator Johnson, second by Representative Dischard, to invite Rick Powell, Julia, is there a discussion with respect to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed? One. Further suggestions in the committee? Representative Collin?
Now, I just wanted to say, back when we were talking about the lobbyists, I started to feel like we're missing, so I'll just make that comment, we're missing a little bit now, to me.
Anybody else have any suggestions to make? Anything you'd like to have in there? Seeing none? What else do we have to do today with respect to this work session? Is your motion, is your motion to recess the work session? Senator, move by Senator Johnson, second? All in favor? Is there anyone else? So the work session, with respect to this review is included, or is recessed?